The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Today is Monday, February 3rd. It's 7:00 PM. This evening, we have a special guest who I am going to ask lead us in the pledge of allegiance. May I introduce Eagle Scout Thomas Solomon? And if you will just stand and lead us, we'd appreciate it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the first item on our agenda this evening is a presentation. And again, it's for Thomas Solomon. I have a proclamation from the town council, and I'm going to read it down at the podium. Oh, thank you. And I'm going to ask Thomas to join me there. We're going to turn this around so we can look out at everybody, okay? All right. Thomas James Solomon. Whereas, Thomas James Solomon is a member of the Boy Scouts of America Troop 76, a senior at Plainville High School, and is planning to attend Leslie University in Cambridge, Massachusetts, to obtain a Bachelor of Fine Arts in Animation and Motion Media. And whereas, Thomas is a dedicated young man who has truly exhibited a commitment to the scouting principles of honesty, fairness, and service to the community, and has earned 24 merit badges and received the National Outdoor Achievement Award for camping. You've been busy. Good. And whereas, the Eagle Scout is the highest rank of recognition offered in scouting. And whereas, Thomas's Eagle Scout service project consisted of organizing and building shelving units for the storage area at the Queen Anne Mazinga Center, thereby creating a more efficient use of the space and providing their volunteers ease of access for the many activities, events, and programs that are held at the center. And whereas, the Eagle Court of Honor for Thomas's commemoration of completion of the Eagle Scout requirements is January 25th, 2020. Now therefore, the Plainville Town Council hereby recognizes the efforts of Thomas James Solomon and expresses thanks and congratulations, and wishes him success in all his future endeavors. The proclamation is signed by myself, Deborah Tompkins, Vice Chairwoman, Ty Cox, Jesse Nazzo, Rosemarie Moranti, David Underwood, Christopher Wazarko. Congratulations. That's wonderful. I know that this is years of work. This is not something, and it's not something everybody can achieve. It's long, it's dedication, and it's truly an honor that's awarded to the very best. So I want to congratulate you again, Thomas. And we have a little gift for you. This is a lapel pin from the Town of Plainville. So if anytime you feel, when you're away from Plainville, you want to feel back at home, you can put your lapel pin on. And you can take this for you. Thank you again so much, and congratulations. Well done.
Thank you.
Best of luck. We do not have a public hearing this evening, so I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of meeting January 21st, 2020, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we have to add one more item.
We do, Madam Chair. Motion to add the following, under Section 14, matter appropriate for executive session for personal matter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Announcements and reports. Do we have any announcements or reports to make this evening from any of our assignments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Last week, I attended the January meeting of the Committee on Aging. And just a couple of quick highlights. A good part of the meeting was spent talking about the budget proposals, which have been submitted to the town manager, and also a review of the accomplishments for the past year. That will also appear in our budget book, of course. And just another note, they are coming up on their 45th anniversary of the Plainville Senior Center and its programs this year. So there will be more to come on that during the year.
Great. They're very good at celebrating milestone events. I'm sure it'll be wonderful.
Yeah. Good parties there.
Oh, you bet. Does anybody else have anything to add? Okay. Moving on to appointments and resignations. Item number one.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint John Misca as temporary fire marshal effective immediately.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions tonight? Thank you. Board of Education will report at our next meeting. On to the report of the town manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much. My first item and only item this evening is the fiscal year 19 audit review. Both Nicoletta Matig and Elena Clausen are here this evening to give a presentation of the recently completed town audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. The fiscal year 19 audit was previously provided to the town council.
Sorry.
And has been posted on the town website. So with your permission, I'd like to ask Nicoletta to step forward, and I believe she's going to start the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I prepared a summary for everybody so I can follow along for my presentation. And if there are any additional questions that you came across while you were reviewing your reports, you can stop me anytime, or you can ask questions in the end. Either way, it will work for me. So we, under the agenda, I'm going to go over, do I need to turn anything on here?
No, it's on.
It's on, okay. Okay. I think this is better. Okay. So I listed an agenda of items that I was, I'm planning to cover today. So listed engagement scope, results of the audit regarding the comprehensive annual financial report or CAFR, federal single audit, state single audit, management, I'll go over management advisory later, required communications, and I have listed some upcoming GASB's for the next few years. So our audit was performed under the following standards that I listed there. Auditing standard generally accepted in the United States of America. The standards applicable to financial audits contained on government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States, and uniform guidance for the federal single audit and state single, and Connecticut State Single Audit Act for the state single audit that we perform. Excuse me. CAFR, or the comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, is prepared by the management. So management is responsible to prepare the financial statements in accordance with GAAP, and to design, implement, maintain, internal control over those financial statements. Our responsibilities as auditors are to perform an audit, and based on the audit work that we do to issue an opinion on whether or not financial statements are free of material misstatements, being either due to error or fraud. And during the audit, we look at the internal controls in order to come up with our audit procedures, but we do not issue an opinion on the internal controls. The opinion is just on the financial statement. So on the next slide, I summarized the reporting results. For the financial statements, the report, our opinion was unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. And the report that's issued based on the government auditing standards, and it's included both in the state and federal single audit reports, has two parts. One is the internal control over financial reporting, and that, based on our work, we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And the second part of that report is compliance with laws and regulations. Again, we did not identify any instances of noncompliance with laws and regulations. So that report also was clean. In the next couple of slides, I put some, a summary of numbers from the financial statements on the page six there. It's a summary of government-wide financial statements. Both year 18 and 19 are listed for your reference, so you can see how the net position of the town changed from year over year. So as you can see there, total net position increased from $91.9 million to $103 million. So this net position is for the town as a whole, and includes all funds, with exception of trust and agency funds. So included in these funds are general fund, special revenue fund, capital project funds, also long-term assets and long-term liabilities, such as capital assets or bonds and net pension liability, or net other post-employment benefit liability. So as a result of all the activity during the year, as I mentioned initially, net position increased by about $11.4 million. And some of the items, I wanted to emphasize that affected that change year over year were capital assets increased $15.2 million, net pension liability increased $1 million to be $6.1 million at year-end, net other post-employment benefit liability decreased by $2.4 million to $10.1 million, and general obligation bonds increased by $6.7 million to about $27.5 million at year-end. So these were the high-ticket items that affected the change of the net position year over year. At the next page, I put a summary of the fund balance for all the governmental funds. So each column in this small table that I included in there represents a major fund on the financial statements. All governmental funds combined, general fund, special revenue fund, capital projects, ended the year with $16.4 million, and that was an increase of about $1.5 million in comparison to prior year. Fund balance for the general fund was $11.8 million, of which unassigned fund balance is $9.8 million, and that represents above 15.9% of the general fund budgetary revenues. Included in the budgetary results, which are not part of these financial statements, but they are part of required supplementary information, I would want to note that revenues, including transfers in, came in $1.1 million more than budget, and included in those revenues were tax collections, which were $705,000 over budget, and represented 98.25% of the current levy. Expenditures included transfers out came in $605,000 less than budget, and included in the current year budgetary required supplementary information schedules was an additional appropriation of $290,000, which was approved during the year. And as you can see on the table up above, capital project funds had a total fund balance of negative of $3.5 million, and that was mainly due to the road bond project and beginning of the Wheeler School renovation project. So sometimes the time in between when the expenditures happen and when the funding comes in, such as your transfers in or long-term debt, the timing will result in a negative fund balance. So included in the fund financial statements are two other type funds, which are internal service fund for the health self-insurance. Net position on the internal service fund decreased $186,000 to a negative of $2.2 million. And pension trust fund ended up the year with $29.2 million, and the net position increased about $526,000 during the year. So these were some high-level highlights for the financial statements for the CAFR. And on the next slide, I put a summary in one page, both state and federal single audit. So we issued two separate boundary reports for the state and the federal single audit. They both kind of have the similar reporting. They both have a compliance report where we give an opinion on the compliance over major programs that we tested, and both state and federal, the compliance report, we gave an unmodified or clean opinion. And as far as the state single audit goes, the other section is regarding the internal controls over major programs that we tested. For the state single audit, we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So the state single audit report was completely clean. The town received $24 million state assistance. Of that, $10.9 million was subject to the audit. We tested two programs, Clean Water Fund, which had expenditures of about $7 million, subject to the single audit, and Local Transportation Capital Program of $758,000. Our requirement are that we test no less than 50% of the amount that is subject to audit. So $10.9 million was subject to the audit, and we tested more than 50%. As far as the federal single audit goes, as I mentioned initially, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on compliance over major programs, but we identified one significant deficiency on controls over major programs related to procurement. So for everybody's information, Uniform Guidance requires effective of 7/1/2018, the procurement policies of all the government entities that receive federal grants should be updated to include certain language as required by the Uniform Guidance. Even though the town did not have any compliance issue based on our audit, the procurement policy was not updated to include all the language as required by the Uniform Guidance. So we gave the recommendation, the final end recommendation related to the procurement policy to be updated, to be in conformance with Uniform Guidance requirements related to procurement policies. So the written policies and procedures should include some additional information to be in compliance with, in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. The town spent $2.4 million in total federal assistance, and we tested one program. We are required to test no less than 20% of the federal assistance, and we tested Airport Improvement Program, which was about $765,000. In addition to the CAFR and state single audit, federal single audit, we issued a management advisory letter. So the comments that are in the management advisory letter, they are just offered as constructive suggestive for your consideration. There are not any classified as any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. They are just matters for your consideration in order to improve the effectiveness of internal controls for the town. We noted that even though the review of certain documentation is done, it is not properly documented, and some of those things are not documented, are bank reconciliation review, general entry review, and capital assets. So sometimes it's because of the size of the department, or because of the type of the interests that are done, then maybe documentation is lacking, but that does not mean that those reviews are not happening, just the review is not being documented, either by signature or some other form of documentation. Included in the management advisory letter, we repeated prior-year recommendations that have to do with the cybersecurity and fraud risk assessment and tip line. So basically, we continue to recommend to the town, it's a good idea to perform a risk assessment. Everybody is aware of everything that's happening out there, either regarded to cybersecurity risks or the fraud risks. So we are just given a recommendation to continue to consider an assessment and deploy resources as needed regarding to the cybersecurity and the fraud risk. Another section there in your printout is required auditor's communication. So at the beginning of the audit, we are required to communicate with you about the planning of the audit, the timing, and what we, what significant areas of the audit we are going to look at. And in the end, we are required to communicate to you certain items, which I have listed in the next two slides. And first, the CAFR, and not one includes all the significant accounting policies and procedures, policies. If you are curious or interested to know on any of the accounting policies, they are all described in not one of the CAFR. There were no new standards adopted by the town in the current year, even though there was one applicable for government entities, but it was not applicable to town. And another items, item which is very important for the reader of the financial statement is accounting estimates. Certain numbers in the financial statements are not exactly that number, because they could change based on any assumptions that you make on those numbers. And for example, net pension liability, depending on what discount rate is used, if you go 1% or higher or lower, the number that's reported in the financial statement could be quite different. Similar is with the total of PEB liability or other post-employment benefits liability. So any assumptions that go in those numbers make for those numbers to be estimated numbers and not exact numbers. Useful life of capital assets is another estimate that was used to prepare the financial statements, and that is used to calculate the depreciation expense on the capital assets. Also allowance for doubtful accounts, and mostly for the tax outstanding, is another estimated amount in the financial statements. We did not encounter any difficulties in performing the audit. The management of both town and the Board of Education was very helpful, especially town. We had no disagreements with management, and there were no uncorrected misstatements. So if there were any general entries that we proposed to the client as part of our audit procedures, but they were material to the financial statement, we are required to communicate them to you. There were no such material general entries that we proposed as part of the audit. Management did not consult with any other accountants relating accounting issues, and both the management of the town and the Board of Education signed a representation letter, which through that representation letter, the management basically takes responsibility of the preparation of the financial statements, and they provided us all the information that needed to be included in the financial statements. And there is another last item on that communication, other matters, is to make you aware that the management discussion and analysis, budgetary comparison information, pension and OPEB require supplementary information, which are included in the CAFR, we are not required to express an opinion on them. We perform certain procedures, but we do not express an opinion on those sections of the report. And combining an individual fund financial statements, schedule of expenditures of federal wars, the schedule of expenditures of state financial assistance were fairly presented in relation to the basic financial statement. On the last page of that slide, I listed some upcoming GASB standards for fiscal year 2020. Statement 84 fiduciary activities is one that will affect the town. Statement 90 majority equity interest will probably not affect the town. So the statement 84, the reporting might change slightly, depending on the fiduciary of the town, activities of the town, if they are reported in the right spot now or not. So what we'll do, we'll go over the fiduciary activities of the town and determine, with management, determine if those fiduciary activities are reported in the right part of the CAFR. Coming up on 2021, Statement 87 leases, this will be affecting pretty much all towns that have not only capital leases, but even operating leases, because now any leases over one year are going to be liabilities, so they are going to be considered a debt of the town. So those numbers have to be taken into consideration when, you know, decisions are made as far as operating leases to enter into, because before, they were just a footnote in the financial statements. Statement 89 accounting up for interest costs before the end of construction period, that will not affect the town, because it's for activities that are accounted for in an enterprise fund, which town does not have any such activities. And in 2022, Statement 91, count the debt obligations, that will not affect the town. I just listed them, so you are aware that there are changes every year, more changes to come, but not all of them are going to affect the town. So that concludes my prepared presentation for tonight, and I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Nicoletta and the audit that she just gave us a high level of? We all got our audit books, so I'm sure we've read them cover to cover. Well, okay. Well, thank you for coming tonight, Nicoletta, and I truly do appreciate you creating these slides for us, because it's easy to follow, and you've selected certain funds that we should be aware of, and it makes it much nicer and easier for us to follow through. So I think this is a great idea.
Thank you.
So thank you for putting that together. Okay. If there are no other questions, Robert, do you have any comments about the audit? You're pleased with the results? It seems we're doing what we're supposed to do.
Yes, and some of the suggestions that have been made with regards to cybersecurity and fraud risk.
Right.
Those, we really don't do those in-house. That would be, you know, hiring a consultant to give us, you know, advice with regards to that. We just, we do, on the cybersecurity, we do back up our, you know, all of our files on a, you know, almost daily basis, if not every other day. So if, you know, if there was an issue, we wouldn't have to go back a long period of time to recreate it if necessary. But still, the cybersecurity risk is something that is advisable, but it takes time, and you know, we would have to bring a consultant in, and we just don't have the funds for it yet, or just haven't made the funds for it. So I think that's, they're good suggestions, but you know, I feel relatively comfortable that we're, you know, we're covering a lot of those bases. I don't know if there's anything you want to add.
Right. Well, those topics have been mentioned the past several years, same two topics, and we still look at them the same way. But I wonder if there will be a time in the near future where cybersecurity and risk is something we really should do something about, and becomes, you know, altogether more important every year, as people learn how to do things they shouldn't be doing. And so how does that affect our operation, protecting our financial assets and information? So I wonder if there's, that's something we should maybe kind of put out sometime.
Sure, sure. The other issue is that, you know, the hiring of, making a part-time person go full-time in the finance department, I think will help as far as some of the reporting as well, some of the sign-offs on some of the, you know, bank, bank statements and whatnot as well.
Okay.
So, you know, remember, this is as of June 30th, 2019, you know?
Right.
And so we've had some changes since then, including changes to the fund balance. For example, you saw a fund balance amount of 15.95%. That does not include the $300,000 that we appropriated from fund balance, you know, for the fiscal year 20 budget. So, you know, that's why we report something somewhere around 15% right now.
Right.
Because, you know, we subjected those numbers out, because we're past, you know, we're reporting as current, as opposed to back to June 30th, 2019.
Sure. So with having said that, and looked at all of our information here, would you say the town is in good condition? We are, we are doing things as we should? Financially, we're pretty stable?
Well, I feel that way. Certainly, that's why we have the auditors, to give us their, you know, opinion based upon, you know, the financial statements that we gave them, and I believe they feel, you know, with no material weaknesses and, you know, a relative, a clean opinion that, you know, they agree with us.
Okay. Great. All right. Any other questions or comments from anybody?
Just one. The procurement policy, she said that that's something that we need to update. Is that on our radar? Will be on our radar?
Well, you know, the federal government comes in with procurement requirements. Yes, that's on our radar.
I know they don't do our...
We want to be in compliance. We followed our own procurement policies, you know, the town's, you know, procurement policies. But apparently, there are some items that the federal government wants us to include. It's generally...
Well, it sounds more like language than actual policy, per se.
They may ask us to...
I'll be honest, I didn't read it, so I don't know what, you know, I don't know the specifics.
And I'm not familiar with specifically, you know, that would be more Rob's area, but...
But it's something on the radar, at least.
Yes, yes. We need to take care of that, so that we don't jeopardize audits on the federal side.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. There are no other questions? Thank you again, Nicoletta, for coming this evening and for putting this together.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I discussed those, that finding with Rob, and he's aware of them, and he has a plan in place for the future, so I'm pretty sure that will be remediated before year-end.
Great. Thank you again. Okay. Robert, that's it for your report this evening, right?
Yeah, I don't have a happenings report.
No happenings?
Little, little...
Okay.
Well, there's things happenings.
It's not, whoa. Not, whoa.
There's things that are happening. I'm just a little short-staffed in terms of putting.
Okay, understood.
I'll try to get up to speed on that.
Understood. All right. We'll move along to our public comment section. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome the public to come to either podium, state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody, I don't have a sign-up sheet, so I'm just going to go through whomever wishes to participate. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Nope?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At the meeting on January 6th.
Okay, before you begin, may we have your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Jody Coulombe, 128 Bohemia Street.
Okay.
Here in town.
Thank you.
I raised the question to the fire marshal about the hazardous chemicals that are stored within this town by industries, and I didn't get an answer, and I haven't received an answer from the fire marshal, someone who's doing emergency planning, the town manager, or anyone else since that meeting. What I was getting at was what they call EPRA. It's a law that was enacted in 1986, and it's for emergency planning and the community right to know. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
It's supposed to help communities plan for chemical emergencies. It requires industries to report storage, use, release of hazardous substances to federal, state, and local governments. Is anyone aware of what hazardous chemicals are in this town?
I, I could not answer that with any sense of intelligence, no, but I don't know where that information would be gathered from, but.
Do you live in this town?
Do we? Yes, I do.
Do all of these members live in this town?
Yes, they are.
Does this town manager live in this town?
Absolutely.
Yes, he does.
Do you know what a flammable chemical is, a combustible liquid is?
Not from a perspective of a professional definition of that. I know what gasoline is. I know what kerosene is. I know those very simple, basic things, but certainly I don't have a professional knowledge of those kinds of things that I think you're going to keep asking us.
I'm just wondering.
No. Good question.
Because if I asked my mother, she'd say, well, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I do have some experience, believe it or not, right in this town.
Maybe you could share that with us.
Right now? It's going to take longer than three minutes.
No, no, but at some point in time, if you'd like to do that, we'd be happy to hear from you.
If you would like to have a special meeting about what I know about what goes on, or what I've been through in this town, I would be glad to speak with you.
Okay. If you could, at the end of the meeting, if you stay to the end, if you could give me your contact information, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Back to where I was headed here. We had a company in this town on December 31st, and on the 6th of January, I was here to listen to what went on with that situation for a lot of reasons. What I heard go on from what the company had said, what the health inspector said, what DEP reported, was there were no violations created, no health issues for town residents. Am I correct?
That sounds accurate.
Why on Sunday, January 26th, after heavy rains on the 25th, was there a strong smell of petroleum on Farmington Avenue when I was visiting the cemetery where my grandparents Why are there now plastic-covered piles of dirt outside the building? Why is the main gate closed and the doors left open at that facility? It does not appear to have anyone working there overnight right now. According to their permit, the doors must remain closed except when clean or contaminated soil is being moved in or out of the building. The residents of this town must pay for water company upgrades. The residents of this town must pay for sewer plant upgrades, and the town is responsible for protecting the aquifers that supplies the water company with water. Am I correct?
There are definitely regulations that the town and the water company and our water pollution control department adhere to.
And who knows what's in this air that we're breathing? Because I don't know. And I know that there are measures in place, but after I see what's going on, and I smelt, I could taste gasoline petroleum products, it's not good. I don't know if it's, it got into the river, because I was at St. Joseph Cemetery when I smelt it. So I don't know if it's something that's going by the sewer treatment area, but it was definitely petroleum products.
That was on Sunday, January 26th?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? John?
John Kissler, 65 Forestville Avenue. Well, it looks like the Board of Ed is pretty much set with what they're going to present to you. And like I told you before, it's 7:2 for that Board of Ed, and I think that you Republicans have to give some moral support to Deb Hardy and Lori Peterson, because if you read the minutes at the meetings, they are being bullied, and I don't think it's right. They're going to need your support. They're trying to get some more cuts, and they're just being denied, harassed, and said, well, you tell us exactly where. Probably want to look at the whole budget, just like you're going to have to do.
John, if I can just speak for a moment about that, I was at two of the three Board of Education budget meetings.
Yep.
And the last meeting is where there was some dialogue back and forth between those two board members and some other board members. And, you know, it is, it is a time where people are going to talk about their, the questions they had about the budget. I'm not sure they were bullied, because I was there. Did you, were you there?
No.
I was there, and I think perhaps the conversation got very, you know, pointed, but I, I would, I would not say they were being bullied. I think that there was conversation to be had, and they may not have agreed with some of the other members on the board, but it's part of the process.
Well, I disagree with you, because there was more than one. It's just about all of them kind of ganged up on her, and with the language they used, I take it as bullying.
Okay.
That's, that's my opinion, and anybody else read them minutes, and I'm pretty sure you will too.
I think you should, you should have been there to hear that.
No, I don't have to be there.
Okay.
I don't have to be at the meeting. I read the, the minutes, and they're, they're accurate of who said what. Every one of them are named, and there was a lot of back and forth, and to me, that's bullying, because they were, they would not stop. They kept going on and on. And here we go again, they're already saying bare bones again. You hear that every single budget, bare bones. It's not bare bones. It can, it can be cut. And what I'm worried about, I told you, what, 10 to 6 again? And they're going to hammer you again, and they're going to hammer the taxpayers. And that budget has plenty of room to be cut. With them cutting millions of dollars, they can cut it more. I don't know if they ignored me on the capital or not, but those.
Same story.
Those were all legitimate issues that I had, that I think could be a cut there over $100,000. So just want to give you my feelings about.
Okay.
What's going on in Board of Ed.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Catherine?
Catherine Labella, 50 Pierce Street. I really didn't intend to speak tonight, so I have no notes with me, but I do want to get back to this whole issue of the presentation related to the Clean Earth Fire. And Kathy, I think I sent you a copy of an email that I sent to Dr. Pettit related to the emissions from plastic fires, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, benzenes, irritant gases, the list just goes on and on and on, depending on what is contained, what, what the composition of the plastics are. And I am, I'm really concerned that with all of the people who spoke, I do not believe the council or the citizens here of this town heard any factual or scientific information about emissions from an industrial fire such as this. I now have had a couple of communications with Dr. Pettit. He's, he's gotten me a contact person at DEEP, and I have questions that I'm raising with them about when, when, what criteria they use to monitor particulates and to monitor gases from a fire like this. They, what I'm hearing is, oh, you know, there, there was no time for them to set up a monitoring station, but that fire went on, I mean, at least the smoke from that fire was about a 45-minute episode, and the fire went on after that. So we know that plenty, there was plenty of time for particulates and gases to be up in the air, and with no testing happening. And so, I mean, I'll keep you up to date with any information that I have, but I honestly do not feel like you or we received all of the facts related to a fire like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Yes, sir. Mr. Edmund?
Edmund Joel, Edmund, 63 Hollyberry Lane. No rail, no trail, and no thank you. Greetings, Plable Town Council, Town Manager, Mr. Lee. Last week, I called Valley Water Company in anticipation of finding out if they test for PFAS along with all their other tests. I was told to call Tunksis Laboratories on Northwest Drive as they did all of their testing. I was surprised that they could not provide their telephone number, but no problem. I proceeded to call Tunksis and was referred to, I believe, Marge. She was very cordial, but when asked, said that they did not do any testing of PFAS contamination for Valley Water. So I was surprised again, due to the close proximity to Robertson Airport, Plable Town Dump, pardon me, landfill, Scott Swamp, and the Pukwabik River. Of course, much of Plable's drinking water comes from the aquifer beneath those areas, and Plable is blessed with sandy soil, which drains very well. With all the publicity of PFAS contamination in Connecticut and various other places, my thought of slowly being poisoned or sickened by PFAS contamination and my 60 years of drinking our safe public water spurred my inquisitiveness. I want to add that the Phase 3 trail gap is being proposed to closely bypass all of that nastiness, much to my consternation. I also want to reclarify something that I said at our last town meeting. I mentioned that I noticed the state of Connecticut surveyors' van in front of my, my neighbor's house, and it was obvious that the three surveyors cut through our private property to quickly get to the mule hall tow path, and I witnessed them banging in more stakes on it. I was told by Scott Bushy that they can go pretty much wherever they want. I guess that is fine with me, but my main objection is that if they figured out this shortcut through our yards, what is to stop the general public from doing so? No trespassing signs are out of the question. I, I am mentioning this because I felt that what I said was misinterpreted due to the fact that I was told after the meeting that if the surveyors cut through again, to call the town manager's office. Phase number one trail gap closure, I'm almost done, under design, is too close to the backyards of Hollyberry Lane, Cowndale Lane, and inside lots on Redstone Hill. If it, if it unfortunately does get approved, it belongs to the east 100 feet or so on the high ground across from the wetlands. It is also unfortunate to slice through our wonderful Norton Park. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Yes, sir?
Taxation in Connecticut is a serious problem, and I don't know how many of you actually think it is. I mean, the exodus out of Connecticut has been unbelievable the last decade or so, and there are certain towns and cities in this state that have, at least last year, held the line on raising personal property taxes. I don't know how serious either the council is, and definitely the Board of Education is not serious about actually looking for places where they could save money. I mean, I, I get lip service that, oh, yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're doing these budgets and all, and I, I don't see it. I mean, the combination of all the taxes we pay in Connecticut, nobody's holding the line on it, state or most of the towns, and I mean, even the towns that are holding line, the level of the taxation is extremely high, especially compared to other states. I mean, I'm, I'm told a lot of propaganda that, oh, our school systems are so much better than those in, say, South Carolina, or Tennessee, or Texas. I don't believe it. I have friends and relatives in, in those states. And pretty soon, we'll hear exactly how much more the, the town government wants to extract from our pockets. And every year, it's usually something like, well, it's only going to cost the taxpayer, the average taxpayer, 150 more dollars, 165 more dollars, you know? And, and we all think, well, that's not bad. But for the sake of honesty, this year, when I pick up the paper, I don't want to read, okay, the average, the average homeowner is going to be paying 165 more dollars this year. I would like to see an honest figure, like the taxpayer is going to be paying 4,000, 5,000, 6,000, whatever dollars a year, including the next raise. And sooner or later, the crap is going to hit the fan in Connecticut, in the towns, and I would like to see somebody, you know, with a little bit of vision, a little bit of foresight, to start taking it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Marilyn?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, fellow members.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, fellow members. Marilyn Shoret, 18 Milford Street, Plainville. As you know, I haven't been up here in a little while. And you know, it's, it's very nervous for us to get up here. And we'd like to have some respect from you, from each and every one of you. I feel as though we've asked you a number of times to raise the three minutes. And Kathy, I noticed tonight you granted people a little bit more time, but I don't think that it would be unreasonable to allow us at least five minutes. I did a little bit of math. And with you allowing me three minutes tonight, and at the next meeting, another three minutes, that's six minutes a month, times 12, is 72 minutes a year that you're allowed to hear my voice. That's really sad. And then, you only have one meeting a month in July, August, and September. And then we skip over to the holidays. So if you do the math, we're less than an hour a year for you to hear our voice. I think that's really tragic. You know, you may not agree with all of the personalities that get up here. And maybe sometimes I don't agree with them either. But there's a saying in one of the programs, principles before personalities. And we are the taxpayers. You need to pay attention to us and take to heart what we have to say, and have some respect for us. I really believe that in my heart. I can hear my voice shaking, but please think about what I'm saying, and the other people in the room, too. We've, we've asked you repeatedly. And I'm also concerned about the submissions, what happened over here in Plainville. I have pictures of the black smoke that poured out of there. And I called John and said, "Look out the back window, because it looks like it's heading right for us." And I'm telling you, it was not a good sight. And I don't believe that the air was pure that day. Thank you very much for your time.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Joanne?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. For the sake of Carol and the records, meetings, I strongly oppose alignment C and any other alignment that affects Pearon Road, Pierce Street, Hemingway Street, Broad Street, in the park. Let's keep strangers and perverts and druggies out of the park, and rapists. You know what goes on the trail. There may be families, but there's also the other element. And the historical mule hall trail, which I hear there's many stakes being driven on that. So you think, you, you, you're just itching to do what you want to do, and I don't ever hear a "no, don't do that" from you guys up there, ever. And you, Town Employee Lee, is all for it. He's working with the state tighter than a tick. We know that. Now, I'm going to ask you a question tonight. This is very important to me, Kathy, or Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, will you please ask your, our Town Employee Lee what he meant two weeks ago, when I asked him for an apology for shutting off my mic two weeks before while I was up here? Will you please ask him what he meant by "I'm all set"? That's what he said when I asked him for an apology. "I'm all set"? What does that mean? You said how? You said for giving me an apology, but I didn't hear that word? Will you please ask him?
Well, I think you can ask the town manager when you're finished with your time, and speak to him...
No, I want to, I want it now. I want it on, while I'm standing here. I want to know.
Well, Joanne, he already answered you, and if...
"I'm all set" is not an answer.
That was the town manager's answer.
It doesn't say yes, and it doesn't say no.
And if you, if you don't like it, then that's...
And will it go into his file?
No.
It will not?
No. No, Joanne.
So he's the last word? The sun rises and sets in Robert Lee for whatever goes on here? Well, I'll tell you something. As I said last, at the time we were here, as a taxpayer, as, as, as a resident of this town, and whatever else I said, I can't quite remember all that I said, I find it totally unacceptable that he turned my mic off. I don't think he ever turned it off on anybody else. I think it's very rude. It's ignorant. This is a country of free speech. I wasn't swearing. I wasn't saying anything bad about anybody. As a matter of fact, I was asking and for a prayer, a moment of, well, I didn't say moment of silence, but I, I said, "We should say a prayer for the people of Australia and all their diversity, and all the people, and the, the over a billion animals that were killed in that fire, the awful fires." So it's, it's, it's just amazing to me.
Can you wrap up? Because you have expired your time.
I'm wrapping it up.
Please.
But...
Please.
I, I do want an apology. I apologized to, I'll tell you, it was shocking when I, it was revealed to me that he had shut off my mic. I mean, it's, you know, when you're, as Marilyn said, it ain't easy getting up here. It isn't.
Okay. I accept that.
And, and, right.
Can you please wrap up your comments? Because you have...
And I'm speaking for everybody...
Expired your time.
...that even doesn't want to come down here.
Joanne?
Because just for this very thing, getting the mic shut off on you, that's not nice. And if you were my son, you'd get a good whack.
Joanne? Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Before I close off public comment, Mr. Frangos.
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. Just general questions, Madam Chair. The slide presentation, the, I mean, the audit review...
Yes.
As it was going on, it was flashing through my mind, I said, gee, how come the residents get in a booklet or slides? And in the course of the conversation, she mentioned the slides. She gave you folks the slides.
Right.
And I'm asking, is it possible in future meetings, as long as I'm on this earth, can we have slide presentations as the audit is given? Now, I'm not a financial wizard, but all I, all I was really picking up from the young lady was the next slide, the next slide, the next slide. She was talking so fast, which she has to. How you folks put that all together, I don't know, but I was having a problem in the back of the room. Maybe if I saw something visual as a resident, and I think that is open to the residents, isn't it?
Well, we'll consider that. Typically, when we have the audit presented to us over the past many years that I've been doing it, we're looking, we're going through this audit book, trying to follow through on the various schedules and, and things of that nature. So the slides were certainly most helpful for me, because it's a consolidated, you know, presentation, we were able to see it. And this is really for the council. You know, I understand that the public comes and listens and, and things of that nature. And I, I am sure, if you would like a copy of this, we could make one for you. But she brought it up for the town council tonight, so we could follow along with her comments. This is the first year that's happened, so...
Yeah, yes, the, the slides, you mean?
Yep.
Yes. That, I kind of gleaned that when she was talking. And I was wondering, but again, my thought process as she was, geez, it's too bad they didn't have slides, you know, to take a look at it. But you, I think you also, in a way, answered the question for me. This is pre, not predetermined. This is for the interests of the town council.
Correct.
So I'm just hoping if you're going to have residents sit in, you have some idea, like I said, I'm not a financial wizard, but have some idea of what the woman is, Bloom Shapiro, is talking about.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Looks like almost everybody's had a turn tonight that's here. All right. If there are no others, I will close the public comment section, move on to the rest of our meeting. Thank you for your comments. We do not have any old business this evening, so we will move into new business. I believe we have one motion under there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Other items of interest?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We don't, he doesn't have other items, right? I was going to move into...
Sorry. Thanks for that.
I stepped on that, Robert. Do you have anything else?
I got it. I got the message.
Isn't that his turn?
It was.
I had a long speech, but I think... Thank you for that.
Are you all set?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. Having not said that, can we move into, they have a motion for, appropriate for executive session?
Yeah, Madam Chair, motion to move into executive session for a personnel matter.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much.